Okay, it is 7:02 and I am calling, 7:03. And I'm calling to order the calling to order the City of San Leandro City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we've got our, an announcement. The City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate and discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or the California Fair Employment and Housing Act. California Penal Code Sections 403 or 415 are per se disruptive to this meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and the City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, your announcement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment sessions, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute window for public comments, which will take place under Item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after Item 12, City Council Reports. Thank you.
And just to confirm, I don't believe that there is any report on closed session today. Is that correct? Okay, thank you for the confirmation. And we're going to proceed to our proclamation to declare September 2025 as National Preparedness Month here in San Leandro. We didn't do roll call yet. My apologies.
Correct.
Thank you. Let us now confirm. It's the perfect time to have a perfect roll.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azaveto.
Present.
Councilmember Bolt.
Present.
Councilmember Simon.
Present.
Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowen.
Present.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Note, all members are present.
Let us move on.
Chief Bowie.
Oh, Chief Bowie, come on down. As we celebrate you and others that help us prepare. Thank you. So much easier. She just loves these things. I'll let you hold that. Obviously, the importance of preparedness cannot be overstated. So I do want to thank you for being here, and I know that you're standing in because I think one of our hand crews that was supposed to receive this proclamation has actually been dispatched. They're deployed. They're out there taking care of business. So be sure to thank them, to share, to share what we've done. Crew Eight has been instrumental in providing rapid response within Alameda County and has been deployed now as one of our response units to support wildfire suppression throughout the state of California. And they're out there reducing fuel loads in high-risk areas and supporting firefighting operations and other things. So please, please, please reinforce the importance of what they're doing and our gratitude to them. What I'd like to do is more generally talk about national preparedness and emergency preparedness. And I think that based on many years of experience, you know how important it is for people to be ready. So whereas National Preparedness, excuse me, whereas National Preparedness Month observed every September since 2004 creates the ideal opportunity for everyone here in San Leandro to join people across the United States in preparing their homes, their businesses, the community, their communities for any type of emergency, including natural emergencies, technological emergencies, and human-caused emergencies. And whereas planning and investing in preparedness of ourselves, our families, our businesses, the community at large, now, preparing now before a disaster can reduce fatalities, economic devastation, as well as improve community recovery and strength and resiliency in the community and throughout the nation. And whereas all residents of San Leandro are urged to plan ahead for these disasters and they're encouraged but, and to encourage their own families and their friends to do the same by participating in neighborhood preparedness activities, registering their contact information with AC Alert and Nixle, these are mass notification systems, and visiting the Preparedness Campaign website, ready.gov, R-E-A-D-Y period gov. Please visit the website for essential preparedness tips and information. So now therefore I, Juan Gonzalez III, Mayor of the City of San Leandro, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Preparedness Month here in the City of San Leandro. And I urge all community members and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plans, to build a kit, prepare for disasters, and talk to friends and family about preparedness in order to have, to create a stronger and more resilient community. I know you want to say a few words.
You said them all, all the important ones. Build your go-bag, please sign up for alerts, contact your friends and family. It really is important. You never know when an emergency is going to strike. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Crew Eight. They're out there working very, very hard right now. We have a lot of wildfires going on in Northern California. So thank you.
Okay, so for Okay, so for item number five, we've got the consent calendar. And so just very quickly, I am going to pull Item 5E even before we get started so we can have the right recusals to take place there. But are there any other items that someone would like to pull? Councilmember Aguilar.
I'd like to move the consent calendar with the exception of 5E.
Okay, Council, Vice Mayor Bowen, please.
I will second that.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Councilmember Aguilar with a second from Vice Mayor Bowen to remove the entire consent calendar absent Item 5E. At this point in time, we'll take public comment, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment on the consent calendar.
Okay, so I will close public comment on the consent calendar. Come back to council, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote. If we could please silence cell phones, put them on do not disturb mode. Thank you. No, not yet.
All votes are in, motion passes, 7-0 unanimous.
Okay, at this point in time, we will ask for three recusals, Councilmembers Bowen, Aguilar, and Simon. If you could step out of the room while we address Item 5E. Okay, at this point in time, is there a motion? Councilmember Vivas Walton.
Um, I'd like to move Item 5E, please.
Perfect. And Councilmember Bolt.
Second.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Vivas Walton, second by Bolt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes are in, motion passes 403 with Councilmembers Simon, Aguilar, and Vice Mayor Bowen recused.
Okay, so I'm going to take the chair's prerogative here while they're coming back into the room and just let people know with respect to public comment. So we set aside 30 minutes for public comment before taking care of the rest of our business, and then we will reopen public comment for general public comment for items that are not on our agenda. And so for the benefit of your fellow city members that would like, residents that would like to speak, I encourage you to be thinking about what you want to say, how to say it effectively, quickly, efficiently, and Kelly will eventually be calling on you in groups of three, three or four, whatever it is, so that you're standing very close to the mic so that we minimize walking time, we can get as many people as possible in that 30-minute slot at the beginning, okay? So just be mindful of that. So coming back to item number six, now that we are, we're missing a council member. See that? Okay, we still have quorum, so we are going to proceed with the city managers' reports, city attorney report. If either of you have a report, now would be the time. Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, community members, council members. San Leandro is the first library to host the 35 Million Miles to Mars exhibit, whether you're inspiring next generation of scientists and astronauts or expanding your understanding of the red planet. The exhibit has something for everyone with interactive components about Mars and space exploration. It also displays a new prototype spacesuit that is only one of two in the world, the other being at MIT with this inventor. The exhibit begins this week at the main library and runs through November 29th. It's free and open to all. Mayor, that concludes my announcement.
Thank you. So now we will take public comment. So public comment is a time where people may speak to address the council on matters that are not on our agenda. So if it's on our agenda, this is not the time for that. So for items not on our agenda, and Madam Clerk, we will begin, and we will take in person first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have 18 commenters in person, and right now we have one hand up online. So I will start with Chris Beebe, Cindy Fonzino, and Carol Habercross.
If you could please then just all stand and line up.
This is the microphone, right?
That is the microphone. And you can pull it down, you can adjust it.
Thank you. I'm Chris Beebe. I'm here about the rent stabilization ordinance. Mainly, I'm here because I'm a senior and disabled, and I believe that you people, if not one of you, all of you, should call the public, the housing, excuse me, the housing authority and get, San Leandro needs to have Section 8 for seniors and disabled in mobile home parks where seniors or disabled own their mobile home. I own my mobile home. I've owned it for 25 years. But I'm, at the end of this year, I'm going to be homeless. I don't have the money to pay the space rent. And, you know, it's not right. I'm, I'm very sad. I don't know what to do. I don't want to move into an apartment, but I may have to. I don't want to move to Oakland, but I may have to. You know, as I said before, Hayward has this program where seniors and disabled only have to pay 30% of their monthly income, and Alameda County will help out with the rest. I mean, I can't even buy toilet paper or toothpaste. Friends, give it to me. So, you know, I have the phone number on my sign here if anybody would like it. It's 510. Well, I'll tell, I'll tell the person over here. Yeah, you're welcome. Okay? Thank you. Thank you for listening. Please call, please do something.
Thank you. Cindy Fonzino, Carol Habercross, and Leo Sheridan.
Okay, so, sorry. So I will set the tone early.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hold on. I'm just going to set the tone early. Cheering, clapping, booing, hissing, we just listen to our speakers. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As a resident of Mission Bay, I'm here tonight to urge you to act quickly in amending the mobile home park ordinance. The negative impact of the current ordinance is palpable. We've seen seniors no longer able to afford skyrocketing rents, forced to move in with a family member, and while you may think that's good because they have a place to go, think again. People who work their whole lives to have some security reduce to losing what little they had. People's independence and self-sufficiency should not be sacrificed because a corporation has no limit in making a profit. While we understand profits are important, we ask at what cost? I just saw on the news tonight that San Jose is setting up tents to house people before they find an actual place to live. Is this what passes for humane housing? Please do not be a part of the problem. Cap increases at no more than 3% and do not allow owners to pass on the cost of repairs to the most vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Habercross, Leo Sheridan.
Okay, please, please, please. Thank you, Carol.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Gonzalez. My name is Carol Habercross.
Microphone. You can lift it up towards your
Okay, okay. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Gonzalez. My name is Carol Habercross, and I'm a renter. I appreciate the city and the work that's been done so far on the rent stabilization ordinance. The City of San Leandro is a city of kindness, where kindness matters, but also fairness matters, accountability matters, affordable housing matters, integrity matters, helping families matters, bringing the community together matters. I support this ordinance because it is the right thing to do. It is the moral thing to do. It provides tenant stability. When tenants know what their rent increases will be, they can plan their budget accordingly. I believe it fosters good relations between landlords and good tenants, benefiting both parties. Long-term tenants provide a more consistent and reliable income stream as landlords avoid the loss of income that occurs during vacant periods. According to the city website, 48.8% of residents are renters. The average monthly rental is about $2,000. If you work minimum wage of $16 an hour, you make $33,000 a month approximately. And the annual with the rent of $2,000 a month, that's $24,000, is going to the rent. That leaves families $9,000 left to live on, and it should be no more than 30% of your salary. Please pass this rent stabilization ordinance and help our community thrive. And I also agree with the 3% increase.
Thank you. Leo Sheridan, Celine Schaefer, Mary Traunstein.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Leo Sheridan, a 45-year resident of San Leandro, a business owner and a homeowner. I'm here tonight to urge this council to address the toxic behavior that has eroded public trust. From ethics violations to corruption scandals, to harassment of women and attempts of self-enrichment, this council no longer has or deserves the public trust. As an elected official myself, I'm deeply troubled by the state of this council. You were elected to serve the public, not yourselves, and some of you have fallen short of this responsibility. The inability of one council member to regularly attend meetings is unacceptable as you have an obligation to those who elected you to participate in the decision-making process. Furthermore, it is long overdue that the Councilmember Bowen investigation findings be released. This investigation, which involves similar accusations made by former city manager Robustelli against two council members who have been previously censured, sheds light on the pervasive toxic behavior within the council. It is time to release the findings and for the council to move forward with its responsibilities. Ignoring this issue only gives the impression that the council is complicit in this gross behavior. We must restore the integrity to this council and return to serving our great city and addressing the issues that matter most to our residents, such as rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you. Celine Schaefer, Mary Traunstein, and Mitch Heidemah.
Good evening. My name is Celine Schaefer, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of the League of San Leandro Voters. Tonight, we begin what we call the Case of the People versus Councilmembers Azaveto, Aguilar, and Simon. This is about public integrity. All three have been implicated in serious misconduct, confirmed by independent investigations, official censures, and in one case, a federal corruption probe. These are not rumors, these are findings. Councilmember Azaveto is named in a federal bribery and conspiracy investigation. Councilmember Aguilar was censured for interfering with the city manager's duties and creating a hostile work environment. Councilmember Simon was censured after an independent report confirmed he used threats and coercion against the city manager, leading to her resignation. Their actions have caused, cost the city financially and operationally, forcing investigations, contributing to the city manager's resignation, stalling key staffing, and opening the door to legal claims. These disruptions drain staff time, delay priorities, and may cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. Most troubling, none of them have offered a public apology or acknowledged the harm they've caused. So we are here to lay out the facts publicly and for the record, speaker by speaker, case by case. It is our responsibility to bring this forward because if we accept this behavior as normal, we lower the standard for what public service should be, and we refuse to do that. We're watching, the people will speak, and we will not forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Traunstein, Mitch Heidemah, and Jesse Rubin.
My name is Mary Traunstein from the League of San Leandro Voters. This is the case of the people versus Councilmember Azaveto. Councilmember Brian Azaveto has been named as a target in a federal investigation involving bribery, conspiracy, and making false statements to law enforcement. bribery, conspiracy, and making false statements to law enforcement. This was confirmed in a letter from the U.S. Attorney's Office, May 12. Earlier this year, the FBI raided his home, seizing phones, tablets, computers, evidence for potential criminal charges tied to the misuse of public office. Why? Because Azaveto accepted thousands in campaign contributions from the Dong family, then joined them on a luxury trip to Vietnam with the former Oakland mayor, who is now under indictment. He has never explained who paid for this trip, why he promoted the Dong's company, Evolutionary Homes, to city officials, or why he pushed an emergency housing declaration on their behalf. This conduct is a breach of public trust and an ethical failure. San Leandro has already received subpoenas for records. Our city is now entangled in a regional corruption scandal. Council Member Azaveto has said nothing publicly. He has not recused himself. Silence is not accountability. We call on him tonight to acknowledge the investigation, disclose all campaign ties and dealings, and either clear his name publicly or step aside. If you don't, the people will. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Heidemah, Jesse Rubin, and Laura Blumenthal.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mitch Heidemah from the League of San Leandro Voters, and this is the case of the people versus Council Member Aguilar. In November 2024, this council formally censured Victor Aguilar for violating Charter Section 345, which prohibits council from interfering with the city manager's duties. An independent investigation found he crossed the line, and the council voted 4 to 1 to impose consequences. But those consequences only matters if he learns from this. We've seen no acknowledgement of wrongdoing, no real apology, no evidence of accountability or visible behavior change. The concerns don't stop at interference. The city now faces a lawsuit that includes allegations of retaliation and a hostile work environment, especially toward the former city manager. Additionally, we've learned that while the FBI did not raid Council Member Aguilar's home, he was also involved in pressuring the city staff to shortcut procedures with an emergency declaration to quickly make a purchase from the now infamous Evolutionary Homes. All of this has been while speaking publicly about priorities like housing and rent control, but taking no discernible action to actually make those things happen. All of this, plus behavior in some key meetings, show a pattern of bullying and intimidation and not public service. Tonight, we ask directly, will Council Member Aguilar acknowledge his misconduct? Will he change his behavior and meet the standard of collaborative and cooperative behavior and the leadership this community deserves? If not, then we will use the tools available to ensure that he does not continue to erode public trust and prevent ethical and productive governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Rubin, Laura Blumenthal, and Lana Fash.
My name is Jesse Rubin from the League of San Leandro Voters. This is the case of the people versus Council Member Simon. In November 2024, this council censured Fred Simon for violating Charter Section 345 after an independent investigation confirmed he pressured the city manager on staffing decisions involving the police chief and city clerk. This was not speculation. Multiple witnesses, including the mayor and fellow council members, testified that Simon used threats in closed sessions and tied staff decisions to the city manager's performance review. The investigation concluded that Simon helped create a dysfunctional and intolerable workplace, contributing directly to the city manager's resignation. But rather than reflect and rebuild trust, Simon has offered no acknowledgement, no apology, and no commitment to change. In recent meetings, he has even questioned the very ethics rules that held him accountable. His behavior, often combative toward colleagues and staff, shows that he has not learned from public rebuke. And his repeated absences from council meetings raise further questions about his commitment to the role. He does not even comply with the most basic responsibilities as an elected official. So tonight, we ask, will Council Member Simon acknowledge his misconduct and explain how he plans to restore trust? If not, then perhaps it is time to discuss a formal recall, because the people of San Leandro deserve leadership, not retaliation, not excuses, and not continued damage to our city's governance. We are watching, and we are preparing.
Thank you. Laura Blumenthal, Lana Fash, and Maria Silva.
My name is Laura Blumenthal, speaking on behalf of the League of San Leandro Voters. Tonight, on record, we publicly presented the case of the people versus Azaveto, Aguilar, and Simon. We laid out facts confirmed by federal investigations, independent reports, and city council actions outlining misconduct, coercion, and ethical breaches. Yet you've displayed no accountability, if not abject refusal of it. When the community watches as city council members abuse power, ignore censure, and act without remorse, and then nothing happens, you know what happens out here. You breed community distrust, public cynicism, reputational harm to our city. The San Leandro community deserves better, and we are watching. To Council Members Bolt, Bowen, and Viverus Walton, please speak up. Hold your peers to account, or yield your integrity. To Mayor Gonzalez, it is your job to curb the dysfunction within this council. You canvassed at my door on this exact point three years ago, and many lawsuits, rounds of infighting, and FBI investigations later, here we are. As for we, the people, we're not going away. We're prepared to pursue civil oversight, ethical filings, legal remedies, or recall petitions. We want to see course correction and enforceable ethics standards. Please protect the public interest, or we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Lana Fash, Maria Silva, Lee Thomas.
Hello, my name is Lana Fash. I've lived in the senior mobile home park for six years. With the high rent increases yearly, I fear I will not be able to afford to keep living here. My rent started at $899. Before escrow closed, BSM, the owners, raised my rent to $1,050 with no notice to me. When I moved in, my rent was $1,050. My rent now is $1,300. I want to plead with the city council to go forward with changing the mobile home ordinance now and not wait. The ordinance has hurt the homeowners with high rent increases yearly. The city ruled against the homeowners at Mission Bay. The homeowners will have a $500,000 repair bill for a wall that the owners should have maintained. That loan becomes a 15-year lien on our homes, which will make it, our homes, much harder to sell. The city has been promising for years to the Mission Bay Homeowners Association to amend the mobile home ordinance. The time is now to change the ordinance to protect the homeowners from higher rents and owners from abusing the intentions of the ordinance when the city council approved it. Please do not make all the mobile homeowners in San Leandro wait another year. As citizens, we voted for this council. We hope you will hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Silva, Lee Thomas, Rob Rich.
Hello, I'm here with the rent stabilization. I start paying my rent at $1,200, and now I'm getting charged $1,800. When I asked why they were charging me so much, they threatened me with eviction. I was getting eviction notice every month, every three days if you were late. But when you asked why they were charging for so many things, the answer was you're gonna get evicted. When I tried to pay my rent, they denied it. They don't want to accept it no more. So they're threatening me with eviction. Now I'm getting health issues because of this extra stress that I have. I have a child that is under 18, and I'm responsible for it. I don't want to go back to Oakland because of the, everything that happens over there. I want to stay here, but with the rent being so high, I don't think I'm gonna be able to. I have a deaf son, and this community is really good for him. But if I, if I don't get to pay my rent, I'm gonna get evicted, and I'm scared of it. Please make the rent stabilization to come right now and not later on when we are homeless again. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Thomas, Rob Rich, Stephen Tau.
San Leandro residents, elected leaders, you can't be fired up about what's happening in the D.C., in the leadership in D.C. if you're not fired up about what's happening in your own city and the leadership that's happening in your own city. Residents in the audience, residents on social media, who's watching this tonight, it's time to take back your city. It is time to take back your leadership. It is time to ask City Hall to govern on behalf of the people. Your city is under attack by incompetent leadership that is failing to lead and govern for you. We deserve elected leaders who are not under FBI investigation, who are not making backroom deals, who treats women in City Hall and government with respect. We deserve elected leaders who are not being censured by their own, and finally, leaders that shows up to work. San Leandro residents, take back your city. Ask your city, ask your neighbors, ask the people that you know. Make them aware of what's happening in this city. Take back San Leandro, because a city that was once great is now a city that is in need for great leadership. I will say what many people are probably scared to say, and I'll say it because it needs to be said. Council Member Aguilar, Council Member Simon, Council Member Azaveto, do what's right for San Leandro. Step down. Step down and help move this city back in the direction it needs to go.
Thank you. Rob Rich, Stephen Tau, and Mark Janowitz.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I know it's old-fashioned, but I'm kind of old, so here goes. Thank you. Thank you for every time you've put the needs of San Leandro first. Thank you for every time you've admitted a mistake, held yourself accountable, tried to do better, for every time you've really listened to a constituent, especially when you disagreed. I imagine this job gets pretty rough sometimes, maybe even tonight. Thank you for sticking in there. Some urge us to treat those with whom we disagree as our enemies. Thank you for every time you've helped build community. It pays off. Look at your accomplishments, like the Llewellyn Drop-In Center, and the hard work you're in the middle of on rent stabilization. Of course, there's tons to do, and resources are tight, so I sure hope you had a good break. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Tau, Mark Janowitz, Victoria Yang.
Hello. Some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is Stephen Michael Tau. I'm a resident District 1 homeowner. Kids are enrolled in the San Leandro schools, and we've lived here for over 10 years. I'm not here with any group. I'm speaking only for myself. Victor, Fred, Brian, I consider you friends, but in your roles as council members, I'm disgusted and ashamed at your behavior, ordering on incompetence, misogyny, and criminality. Mayor Gonzalez, you call this your council. You bragged about being a full-time mayor, even with your lack of public service experience, but you failed as a leader to unify this council, let alone unify this city, as you focus more on consolidating your personal power and fighting with residents committed to building a better San Leandro. But it's not just you four. If you're on school board, the board of the local democratic club, running a community institution, a local leader, or even activist and organizer like I am, we've all failed to prepare our city for what's coming from the fascist federal government we have, targeting communities like ours across the nation as our city slowly grumbles around us. Instead, we fight over petty grievances and break faith with each other. And I understand, because at one point, I lost faith in us too. On December 4th, 2023, when I came to listen and heard bigotry in this very chamber, I was spit on, called a kike, had threats against my family, and more besides, by people fighting for social justice, by the very people I marched with for social justice in 2020, 2021, and 2022. I don't have all the answers, but I know that if we don't come together right now and get ready for what's coming for us, and it is coming for this city and this country, it'll be too late for all of us. Please, I hope you're listening and ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Janowitz, Victoria Yang, and Cheryl Nolden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. We've certainly heard some weighty issues, and thank goodness we have a way forward. We can come together and pass a meaningful, strong, protective rent stabilization ordinance. I'm a proud homeowner in the city of San Leandro. I'm also a tenant activist. I'm a tenant lawyer. I defend evictions. I've defended thousands of evictions in the county of Alameda. I can tell you, there is a crisis out there. I can tell you, because we've gotten it directly from the presiding judge of the Alameda County Eviction Court, that the number of evictions filed per month now is over twice as many as before the pandemic. Over 6,000 families put out on the streets. And that's without adequate representation on the tenant's side and bad outcomes that result. One thing I want to, I want to interrupt myself and say this. I want to make it clear, my comments are as much directed to improving our mobile home ordinance as they are towards the rent stabilization ordinance, because these concerns of the most vulnerable in our city are united. There can be no division among them. But we need you to pass a strong rent stabilization ordinance, a little bit of which you have before you, but that proposal put out by your staff can be improved upon, and I urge you to engage in the hard work of digging into it and making it a meaningful, strong, protective ordinance. The overwhelming number of these evictions are economically driven. They are allegations of non-payment of rent. It's a financial crisis we are in. Tenants respond by landlords, by alleging that the landlords have failed to maintain the property, that there's retaliation and bad faith. This proposal before you with enhanced protections addresses all of these issues. So this is a good start, but I urge you to do the hard work to get a meaningful ordinance passed. Thank you very, very much.
Victoria Yang, Cheryl Nolden, and Gary Branchod.
I've been a resident for over 10 years, and everyone I talk to tell me San Leandro is getting worse. We voted you in for the taxpayers' best interests. Instead, you have collaborated for your best interest, for your gain, not for the taxpayers. Your personal gain is what you have put on stake. How did $18,000 get approved by the city council for an educational expense? We're talking about rent control, and yet $18,000? You know about how far that would go to help these renters? How can you approve this negligence? There are lawsuits against San Leandro, yes. You haven't mentioned the rest. You haven't published the rest of the lawsuits, have you? And then, how does city council approve their vacation? Why do you get taxpayers to pay for your vacation expenses? Why don't you submit it to the IRS and have them approve for your education, for your vacation, your educational expenses, not the taxpayers? We work long hours, and $18,000, your vacation expense is, is just frivolous compared to a person's rent. In addition, I see some of these field city employees, they're standing at the marina, talking for an hour or so, doing nothing. The park people are parked at the park, doing nothing. But they get paid by our salary. Why don't you log them in for what kind of duties they're supposed to be finishing? Anyway, to end it, I pray.
Thank you. Your time is up. Cheryl Nolden, Gary Branchod. Mr. Mayor, Gary Branchod is the last in-person public speaker. 10 seconds.
Good evening, City Council members, Mayor Gonzalez.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Gonzalez and Vice Mayor and City Manager. My name is Cheryl Nolden and I live at Mission Bay, I'm sorry, Mission Bay Mobile Home Park. This morning, you should have received the revised Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance, which updates provisions on base rent, capital improvements and replacements, rent increases, fair return methods, rent reductions, homeowner rights and protections against harassment. New sections cover language justice and hardship exemptions. Mission Bay Residents Association, Trailer Haven, Bay Shore Commons and other San Leandro mobile home communities remain committed to advocating for fair housing. We urge the city council to prioritize approval of the revised ordinance as many seniors and residents are struggling with rent, facing illegal increases or facing language barriers. And as you heard from a few of the residents looking at maybe being displaced. We will continue collecting signatures protesting, which we did this afternoon, engaging the media and canvassing until all residents can live safely and securely in their homes. Mission Bay residents, Trailer Haven, Bay Shore Commons and all other San Leandro mobile home, manufactured home and RV parks are not going to stop fighting for our rights for fair housing. We will keep pushing the need for approval of the revised ordinance to be front and center despite the issues left that are currently impacting city council. What do we want? When do we want it? Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Branchod.
Good evening, representatives of our city. I'm primarily here for the rent control issue. My wife and I live in the same park that the last entity who was speaking here. Here's, here's the issue. And I have one minute and 38 seconds to tell you. The rent of these corporations own these yards. You own the house or the trailer, but you don't own the dirt. The issue is the dirt keeps getting more expensive to the point where you can no longer afford it. And then they either take your house because you could not pay the rent or whatever. Point is, you're screwed. Now, none of you are screwed because, you know, we're very comfortable. But there are people, I'm comfortable, we can pay the rent, but there are people who cannot. And by the way, if you want to sell your house and the property rent goes higher, you have to lower the price of your house, manufactured home for that entity to buy it. So they're also stealing the equity because the higher rent, the less you have to sell the house for. And I spent 40 minutes out here laying on the ground with a blanket with rent control now because that's where people who are living in a trailer go next. They go to the street. Thanks for listening and let's all pay our rent.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment in person.
So at this point in time, we have far exceeded our 30 minutes. So we'll continue with public comment after. So let's move to our next item on the agenda, which are public hearings of which we don't have any, but we do have item number nine was a presentation on our climate action plan and receiving a status update. If I remember correctly, we do have our sustainability analyst. There you are, Kimberly Anderson, here to introduce this item.
There we go. Ready? Okay, good evening, Mayor Gonzalez and city council members. My name is Kimberly Anderson and tonight I'd like to present you with a status update of the city's climate action plan. I'd like to start by introducing the city's environmental services division in Public Works, which was newly formed last year. And it includes three programs, sustainability, solid waste and stormwater. This division is led by Carrie Parker, who is the Public Works Environmental Services Manager. And her team consists of myself, the management analyst, two position, as well as a waste reduction program coordinator, whom we are excited to have join us in the next month or so. To house this division that hadn't existed previously, the city incorporated several sustainable practices to create office space for us, which we will be moving into next month. Some examples include repurposing the vacated space at the South Branch Library, which had been shuttered since the pandemic, into office space for the new environmental division offices. We retrofitted windows to double pane to make the building energy efficient and to reduce street noise from East 14th Street. LED lights replaced the fluorescent lamps in the fixtures, which you can see in the photos. And lastly, this new space was furnished using refurbished furniture, including cubicle walls. Before I get started on the status update, I want to remind you why the climate action plan is important to the city of San Leandro. A climate action plan is essential to provide a strategic roadmap for communities and governments to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, build resilience to climate change impacts, promote equity and improve quality of life. By establishing clear goals, quantifying emissions and outlining specific actionable strategies across sectors like energy, transportation and waste, these plans guide effective action and resource allocation for a more sustainable future. The city, the community, our businesses and any activities in this region must all contribute to and agree with implementing this plan because we are in this together. San Leandro's Climate Action Plan, or CAP, was first adopted in 2009 and that plan was later revised and adopted by city council in 2021. This slide provides a timeline for expected status updates like the presentation tonight. Around Alameda County, typical CAP full revisions with updated inventories are on a 10-year schedule. The last status update city council received on the CAP was in 2023. So we are moving forward with my annual updates with the goal of fully updating the existing plan in 2031. Ava Community Energy, formerly East Bay Community Energy, is the local electricity provider for Alameda County. Ava generates the electricity while PG&E delivers the power and handles the physical infrastructure. Right after the 2021 CAP was adopted by council, the first action implemented was to change San Leandro's power mix default to renewable 100 for residents and businesses, which is 100% from solar and wind. This power mix selection can be changed by account holders at any time and the difference in cost between renewable 100 and the next mix, right choice, is less than $4 per month. Ava also has a disadvantaged communities program on the horizon, scheduled to begin in April of 2026. It's also known as the Ava Solar Discount Program. This will offer income-eligible customers a 20% discount on their electric bills in addition to any existing discounts while providing them with a 100% renewable energy supply from local, from local solar projects. Ava Bike Electric is a new incentive program that began in July of this year and it aims to increase access to e-bikes, reduce carbon emissions and support local businesses. You can apply for an instant rebate of $400 to $1,500 on a new e-bike, including $250 for safety equipment for income-qualified individuals. Monthly lottery drawings are held on the fourth Tuesday of every month. In solid waste and waste reduction, we've had some big changes. Last year, we finalized a new collection agreement with Alameda County Industries, or ACI, and a new post-collection agreement with Waste Management, or WM. Both 10-year agreements began February of this year and have incorporated the state requirements of Senate Bill 1383, which is essentially a strategy to reduce greenhouse gases by ensuring that organic material is composted instead of landfilled. Also new, on Earth Day, we launched Trash-Free San Leandro, an initiative to celebrate and reward the use of reusable dishware whenever possible by avoiding single-use disposables. For the schools in May of this year, in partnership with ACI, Oreloma Sanitary District and Stop Waste, we reengage the school district's recycling and waste sorting programs by providing educational assemblies, recycling containers and technical assistance to custodial staff. Regarding the concerns of sea level rise as a bayside city, the California Ocean Protection Council, or OPC, awarded San Leandro funds via the California Resilience Challenge Grant in 2023 to study the impacts of sea level rise in our city. This city, this study will provide the city with adaptation strategies to address flooding associated with sea level rise. The city recently had a work plan approved for additional grant money to fund the next steps in this study, which are listed here on this slide. Next, we have alternative modes of transportation. Last year, the city updated the bicycle and pedestrian master plan and installed enhanced bike and sidewalk infrastructure. The goal of the AC Transit Realignment Project is to improve transit service and connections in San Leandro where needs were identified. In addition to the new stop at the San Leandro Boys and Girls Club, new service from San Leandro Bart to Union City Bart was added. The Tree Master Plan was adopted January of this year. This provided plans for tree planting and tree maintenance. The city has hosted eight tree planting events since 2024, adding approximately 50 trees to our inventory. They are our plans for a future ordinance update that will include additional requirements surrounding privately owned trees. And the city's resilience network continues to expand. This network is comprised of hubs which provide or focus on one or more of the following. Community connection, emergency preparedness and climate action. From community-based organizations such as churches and nonprofits to housing complexes and neighborhood meeting spots, resilience hubs are trusted spaces that serve as inclusive gathering places to connect with others, to share resources, to exchange information and to express community care during disasters. There are no requirements to join us in these efforts. Our network meets every other month to support each other and to support new neighborhood groups to form with the goal of making our community more connected and resilient in our everyday lives as well as during times of disruption and recovery. Just a few of our next steps towards reducing San Leandro's carbon footprint are listed here and I'll go into a little more detail in the next three slides. In order to make the city operations more sustainable, we are going to begin work on turning city facilities into certified green businesses. We will be working with the checklist of the California Green Business Program to make sure the city is walking the talk towards sustainability and is a model for other San Leandro businesses. Water and energy conservation, reduction of paper use, reduction of disposables, non-toxic cleaners and better recycling stations will enhance city operations and result in a more sustainable place to work. Next, regarding fleet fuel reduction, Public Works is in phase one of electrifying its truck fleet and installing chargers. We currently have three electric vehicles on site with five more on order and we anticipate that the heavy-duty fleet will be fully electrified by 2035, which will put us in compliance with the California Air Resources Board's initiative called Advanced Clean Fleets. That requires a phased-in transition toward zero emission, medium and heavy-duty vehicles. This will result in cleaner air for everyone. And thanks to Vice Mayor Bowen's pledge, we are in the process of qualifying as a clean California community. This is a new state designation for communities who have completed certain initiatives like implementing this climate action plan and beautify San Leandro, which focuses on community litter cleanups and landscape improvements and trash-free San Leandro, which is focusing on single-use foodware reduction where possible. This designation allows the city priority access to grant and educational opportunities. Thank you for your time this evening and that is all for tonight and I'll see you at the next CAP update. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. So what we're going to do here is we're going to take public comment on this item and then we'll come back to our council member questions, comments, exploration. So any public comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we only have one hand up online and no public, two hands up online, no public comment in person.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment in person and we'll open up public comment online.
Okay. Douglas Balding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. I mainly want to laud the work of Kimberly Anderson, who's certainly hit the ground running. It's been my great pleasure to meet her through the work of Homegrown Habitat San Leandro and a little bit about the resilient, around the resiliency hubs. So I'm looking to, forward to much, much, much more. My one question from the presentation emanates from this moving plan to inhabit the South Branch, the former South Branch Library space because I kind of remember you guys voting to rebuild it. So how is that going to work to have our environmental services offices in South Branch while it is being reconstructed and turned into a bigger, better library branch? It seems like only a temporary fix, so it just kind of raises a question for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
So thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm, I have to say, I think the climate action plan was one of the big accomplishments of the last administration and I know that this administration understands the importance of it. We're all in this together and I just wish that we could focus on solving problems as well as we focus on pointing fingers. This is important. We need to keep working on this and I believe that the group that you have hired are doing that. We just need to keep putting focus on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Elvaro Ramos, you may unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so with regard to the presentation on climate, I felt most encouraged by the Tree Master Plan. I felt most encouraged by the Tree Master Plan and also the Sea Level Rise Plan. But I wanted to comment in particular on sea level rise. I wanted to emphasize that we need environmentally-friendly ways of managing sea level rise. We need to restore wetlands, shoreline, potentially coral reef. The complexity of biological organisms is a tool that can combat it. And also, I think there's a case for sewer upgrades that would help with flood control. I would advise against using environmentally-destructive seawalls and levees that would permanently damage the coasts and the beaches of this area. Those are really expensive methods that could fall apart during natural disasters. And, you know, if a natural disaster were to break one of these down, then you're looking at paying an expensive bill to actually build it back up. So I really want to emphasize the need for environmentally-friendly ways of dealing with sea level rise, but I feel encouraged that at least the city is making the concerted effort towards doing something about it. We have to learn to live with these issues in the future. It's not just something that where we can build a wall and keep these things out. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment?
Okay, so I'll close public comment, and then I'll just clarify something from one of our public commenters. You guys are located at the South Branch Library, correct? And not the Molford Marina Library? So just for the public commenter's benefit, the Molford Marina Library is one that is being reconstructed and expanded, not the South Branch. So with that, we will go to questions and commentary. Let it all flow, beginning with Councilmember Aguilar. We can go around multiple times if needed. Councilmember Aguilar.
Kimberly, thank you so much for the presentation. I grew up watching Bill Nye the Science Guy. And so Bill says, "Climate change is happening. Humans are causing it," and I think it's, this is perhaps the most serious environmental issue facing us. And it is, and we're working to combat it. And I think the steps that we are taking are fantastic. I'm glad that East Bay Community Energy is now AVA Community Energy with regards to electrifying the fleet to 2035. That's a tough move to, you know, take on, tackle that. And I think that's, you know, the advocacy of our council to show that, you know, we are environmentally supportive of moving this aspect forward. I think one of the important parts is working with AC Transit to make sure that we have the lines that go directly to the Boys and Girls Club. I think as someone who was a product of, you know, after-school events and getting involved in transportation was key as part of being a latchkey kid and, you know, being able to transport myself without having parents take me to and from events because they were, you know, working to pay the rent. And so that is awesome. The Tree Master Plan is wonderful. As somebody who has worked with our city to get a tree, I have a jacaranda that's planted right in front. And so you have these options to pick a tree. I picked one, and it's growing beautifully right in front of my house. I think with regards to sea level rise, that is something that, you know, is real. It's happening. I think, you know, San Francisco are taking steps to, you know, have this multi-billion-dollar seawall being built. And, you know, we are, you know, it's something that we need to focus and hone in on because it's not going to go away. And I think the, you know, keep up the good work, anything that I can do to be supportive. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolt?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. One thing I will point out that I liked when you were talking about the South Branch being repurposed, and you said you used refurbished furniture? That's in real lines with climate control as far as not building things we don't need and wasting money on stuff like that. So that, I wanted to highlight that because I know you said that, and I think that's important for us to continue to do. The last commenter about sea level rise and understanding how that's affecting us, it's extremely important to fold that into this conversation as you guys have already done, and focusing on that so that it's a long-term solution that cannot be destroyed through any major catastrophes that may come. So, you know, we're going to do some work, which I think is good, but having the focus on sustainable efforts is also just as important as we do this work. And then lastly, there was a, and I think it might have been Slide 6, where you had the group who was exchanging some of the fruits of their labor or some of the crops that they have grown within the city with others that may need it. That's been discussed in District 6. And so how do we, how do I connect them with that group? Because maybe not starting a whole new group on that side, but combining the efforts and maybe rotating it or, you know, just connecting the people. Is there a solid group, as that picture showed, a way to get in contact with them that we can, you know, help distribute that information to try and bring more into the fold?
Actually, I am working and in discussion with Human Services, with Pedro Noronha. And we are talking to Tandy Farms, and there's another group that they're involved with where we're trying to form some sort of new group to bring this back into play again. So as that develops, I'd be happy to have somebody reach out to you with that information?
Yes, please. And then maybe even if we can help with some of the efforts they've started, just bring it to you and see if that's something you want to work with.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'll piggyback on Councilmember Bolt's comment. I wanted to highlight, and maybe you can share too, a little bit about the resilience hubs and the roles that they have. One of the first questions, and I think it was mentioned that it's bringing community together, and the thing around emergency preparedness was to share resources, I think, when an emergency happens. But what I didn't hear, or it wasn't as clear to me, was the role of the resiliency hubs for emergency preparedness in particular, like getting together to make the bags or in case of emergency. Are they, do they play a role in sort of this hub of resource from the city? What is that relationship when an emergency happens?
Right now, we've been, the city actually has been having several emergency preparedness workshops and cert training. There's been all kinds of things offered by the city and through the city. So we have been, we have, the members have been going to those classes. I actually had another member have the fire department come to their neighborhood and do one of these presentations for the neighborhood. So we are encouraging people to go to these events. And then also, within the hub that I belong to, we've had like little mini drills to see if our generator worked and what we would do and different things like that. But we are not working directly with the city to have emergency connections. We're trying to teach the neighborhoods to become resilient and to learn to depend on each other and not the city because with, if there's a disaster or a huge emergency, we're going to need to help each other because there just aren't enough people to help us in the city during times of emergency.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Then I'll pause your timer, let city manager add a little bit more color.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bowen, for that wonderful question. So Libby Bestman, our Emergency Services Specialist, also partners with Kimberly Anderson and Carrie on supporting resiliency hubs and does presentations. As Kimberly mentioned, the fire department went out there. But Libby also was well, from an emergency-preparedness perspective, meets and trains with different HOAs and resiliency hubs as well.
Fantastic. And I know I've met with a few of the resiliency hubs in my district, and I appreciate that they do need to be tied to a brick and mortar. So oftentimes, it's like a church or a community center. Is there a way for neighbors who are not, say, directly on that street or within the vicinity, or who doesn't go to that specific church or gathering place? Are they able to then also join these resiliency hubs?
Yes, there's, in my hub, there are people that do not belong to the church that's supporting our group with space. And there are people that don't, that live all throughout the neighborhoods that are on other streets. It's not exclusive. And we encourage people to, if they don't have a place to meet, to maybe meet at people's homes or to meet in the driveways, different things. So it's, no two hubs look the same. They're all different, and they're unique, and they adjust to the community and what their needs are. So.
That's fantastic, and I want to echo what Councilmember Bolt said about food sharing. I know it happens a little bit, but the more that we can promote that, obviously with just the amount of food scarcity there is and obviously with funding cuts coming too. There are lots of different groups, especially in San Leandro and the history of San Leandro, that are, just have abundance and finding ways to be able to share those, the resources they have. They're growing literally in their front yards and backyards. So I was looking through the Climate Action Plan, and I have a question around, you know, we're talking about the status of it. We, for this, we've got 2020, 2030, 2050 goals for greenhouse gas reduction. And I'm wondering where we're at in terms of our progress towards that? And then what, if any, are challenges because of what's happening at the federal level, changes with the EPA and just the general state of what climate change is and the priorities there are at the federal level versus what we're trying to do here at the city?
Yes, there are lots of challenges.
50 seconds, no.
Yes, and I don't know how they're affecting us yet, but other than that concern. And yeah, it's kind of too early to know what the answer to that question is. Okay, thank you.
We will go to Councilmember Azavito next.
Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to allude to, based kind of the question that my colleague asked, but it's about the municipal fleet. Is that, you probably don't know that either, but is that going to put something in there where we can't get the vehicles, you know, through federal funding? Or is any grants, or is that going to affect us getting those vehicles?
I don't believe so. I can't answer that directly, but I don't believe that that's affected by federal funding. That's where, that's, yeah, I believe that we're paying for that.
I know that some tax credits are going away and also some charging they allow. When you buy an electric vehicle, you have two years where you can charge it for free.
Yeah.
Changing a lot of that, so I don't know if that's going to affect us.
Yeah, I'm actually not sure on the details of that in particular, but I could find out and get back to you. Thanks.
Councilmember Simon?
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much, and I'm really happy to see your team and just to see this new division together. And thank you, Janelle, for leading that. This is really, really exciting. I'm, like many of my colleagues, totally supportive of everything we can do to help our environment because it has been neglected for generations and generations. And I'm glad to see us turn the corner and start to improve things. This is great. A couple of questions for you. On one question, and I was happy to see the slide with the greening of city facilities. And under recycled materials, there's a tab there. As far as recycling textiles or like jeans and coats and things for bulky, or not bulky, but regular pickups, has that been a discussion or any dialogue on that for the community, instead of throwing them in the trash to have them reused?
Actually, Carrie Parker, my manager, is an expert on this topic, and I'm going to defer to her on this question.
Here we go. Yes, the new agreement with Alameda County Industries, right? So not in the Oreloma District, but in the city's sanitary district. There, we have included a new textile collection that is twice per year, once the first week in June and the first week in October. You're going to see social media come up for that shortly, where you leave a clear bag of your textiles out with your three carts that you've pushed to the curb, and they are picking it up separately and making sure those textiles are recycled or sorted. Some for re-wearables, but most for other textile recycling. So just so you know, we're on the way.
Excellent. That's great to hear. Next question is litter and illegal dumping around our city. Some areas have more than others. Railroad tracks in particular have a lot. And litter, some areas are just heavy, like in front of Walmart, on Hisparian, at Llewellyn, just clustered with litter. What plans does the city have to try to address that? Not just picking it up, but educating, changing people's mindset to not throw it out in the first place?
Excellent question again. This is kind of the essence of what the Trash-Free San Leandro program is, where you're going to work in moving forward to discourage people in the use of single-use and use reusables more often, not use the thing, the single-use thing in the first place. So that is our, going to be our effort. We're going to be doing some major education pushes in the years to come. But we are hoping to see less litter because of it. If people are using more reusables, like the reusable utensil sets that we gave out at the Cherry Festival this year, instead of the plastic forks and the plastic spoons, then we are hoping that we will see less litter in the first place.
Excellent. And you practice what you preach at your employee appreciation picnic. I did notice that you had reusable plates, forks, knives, and everything. And there was no trash on the ground because it didn't exist. So you're practicing what you preach. And I'm looking forward to that spreading throughout our city, to our different businesses, because that would be a major help, major help. Our next question is water reuse and reduced, reducing the amount of drinking water. Hisparian, I'll bring that up again. That runs past the Walmart, and you continue south. It goes into San Lorenzo, Hayward, and it's like night and day when you pass under the 880. Lush, green, beautiful landscaping just at the other side in San Lorenzo because of the recycled water from Hayward. Just a few feet to the north, us in San Leandro, desolate, very little landscaping. Yet, we're right next door. Recycled water. We have our own treatment plant. What plans do we have to try to recapture and reuse that water rather than just send it to the bay?
I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that question, but I can look into it. It sounds like a good program to be developed, though.
Okay, and I'll throw a plug in on that one, too. From the water side, I understand that we, as a city, would need water purveyorship rights. Right now, East Bay Mud has those rights, but those are very, very old. Modern times show that local municipalities and cities should also do recycled water, so I would be very supportive of that. I'll use my time.
Councilmember Yvonne Walton, please.
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate all the time and detail. I really only have one question, just in terms, I was looking through the Climate Action Plan that was approved in 2021. And I'm interested in kind of understanding how we're tracking greenhouse gas emissions and how we're kind of tracking progress towards our 2050 goal. How often do we get kind of updates on measuring? Is it like, is it every five years? Or how do we go about kind of measuring progress in terms of all these different strategies combining together ultimately to get to our 2050 goal?
In the 2021 plan, they indicated a bunch of tasks to get us to the goals that we set forth for 2030, 2050. And doing that in-depth inventory of what is currently being used and what we project being used is a big project. And so we save it for once every 10 years. So the next inventory- So the next inventory, unfortunately, will probably be done in 2030 so that we can report out on where we are in 2031.
And do we have any kind of interim points, like maybe the air district is measuring air quality? That's included in the report, kind of some interim, you know, BART usage in San Leandro, public transportation?
It's a good point. I think that in our next update, we can include more of those sorts of gauges that are being reported out around the region and included in our report to council. That's a very good point.
Thank you. And then finally, do we coordinate on a regional basis? I know that's a lot of cities in the East Bay have adopted climate action plans. Ultimately, greenhouse gases don't respect city borders, county borders, state borders, any borders really. Do we have any kind of regional coordination in terms of thinking, acting locally, but really thinking regionally about some of these tactics to kind of reduce greenhouse emissions, you know, increase public transportation and so on and so forth?
Stop waste. The Alameda County Waste Authority and Recycling Board hosts the Energy Council as well. And the Energy Council has a technical advisory group, which includes all the sustainability professionals from all of the jurisdictions in Alameda County. Kimberly attends that monthly meeting and reports out on San Leandro and listens to everyone in the region with their upgrading reports.
Thanks for your time. I yield my time back to the chair.
Then, did you have anything else that you wanted to explore further? Councilmember Simon, please proceed.
Thank you. One more question, and this relates to sea level rise. And I was really happy to hear the city was working on Long Beach Restoration Rehab Plan. And I've seen some community updates on it, which is very well received by our community. And just wanted to give a shout out to staff on that, Sheila and her group. And it's very well received and it's really good to see progressive projects moving forward and pulling grant money in, too. That's not utilizing our city, you know, tax base, but pulling in those grants is very valuable. So I just wanted to say a special thank you.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I'll add my comments before moving to our next agenda item and a couple of questions. So one of the things that drives heat index, the amount of concrete. And I know that we've got a growing number of concrete lawns in San Leandro. I had someone tell me that they were shocked when they put in artificial turf, how hot the artificial turf was. And so I'm wondering, have we given some thought around, I know that we have an ordinance already around concrete and the concreting your whole property. But do we have some something that we might do there to be more effectively addressing heat index that you've thought of already? And if not, that's fine, too. But I'm just, I'm wondering if you've been contemplating it.
Certainly contemplating it. So like an ordinance you're suggesting of permeable pavements or any sort of, if we're going to be greening, let's not covering lawns so that we don't have to water those, but maybe having water tolerant gardens that can or rain gardens that can trickle that water through more slowly. It's an interesting thought.
Okay, so the with respect to just the any kind of ordinance reinforcement, obviously the power of AI these days and image recognition, satellite images, because I know we do have an ordinance that says you can only cover so much of your property and impermeable surfaces, to be thinking about how we could use satellite imagery from the last 20 years or whenever that ordinance was passed to say, hey, clearly, I don't know when it changed exactly, but it's different today than it used to be. So just food for thought. I'm always concerned about the most impactful items. I know that methane is six times more dangerous than CO2. And so I think about green waste in particular. And so I'm particularly excited about any efforts that we can undertake to better drive composting of green waste. Do we have measures right now in place with ACI and Oreloma to measure? And we've gone from X to Y to Z and what, do we have a STIRSAP plan?
Yes, it's a law. It is state law. Senate Bill 1383 made composting mandatory in a jurisdiction like ours. So every household and business in San Leandro that hasn't been received a waiver for whatever reason has organic service outside the building. And every year, both Oreloma Sanitary District and the City Sanitary District, we do route reviews and making sure that the right things are in the right bins. This is mandatory. We are required to do this and so we do. We are providing more and more education every year. To residents, everyone in the city receives a door hanger or a bill insert that says that this is a mandatory practice here in San Leandro and in Alameda County and the state of California. And so we are doing everything we can, a little bit more every year, to get that education out there. The big organics generators, let's say, in our commercial kitchens are are being shown, this is the bin you put it in, not that one. So we are doing a lot of work towards getting the word out to all sectors in San Leandro.
And so I think in the same spirit as Councilmember Everson Walton, earlier, just metrics, I think, would make the council excited. You know, we've gone from this to this.
I can build something.
Thank you. I do want to say that when we see the illegal dumping that some of our council members have pointed out, one of the more common things that you see is mattresses, mattresses or some kind of bulky furniture. And I know that we have been working towards our contract negotiations, et cetera, updating the ease with which those can be disposed of properly. Can you just tell us a little bit about that?
There's a state law, actually, that requires mattress producers to take them back in some way, shape or form. This usually involves funding mattress recycling initiatives in smaller jurisdictions. Mattresses are usually part of a bulky pickup and so they are taken away for free as part of a bulky pickup. It's one bulky item in addition to the three yards that are set at the curb. So yes, we are enhancing that mattress recycling every moment we can.
And again, I just think that's one of those things where we can tell our public, you know, we used to process 1,000 mattresses and now we process 5,000 mattresses. It just helps tell the story of how we're making progress. Are there any other questions or comments? Because I've got two more, so I'm just going to plow through. Ms. Anderson, on the resiliency hubs, I think you mentioned that there's 18 now within our network. My recollection is that it wasn't that big before. Has there been a change? Are we gaining more into the network or is it currently flat?
Yeah, the network is expanding. We have more people coming in. We have more groups coming in and we're actually making a concerted effort to try to help more neighborhood hubs come in. We have a lot of organizations, but I'd like to, we'd like to help more neighborhood hubs form. So we're talking to neighborhood associations and things like that to help us start increasing those around the city.
So I'd load, if you can just send me, a year ago, we were at nine and now we're at 18, something like that. And the last thought that I have is, and this is something that I've spoken a lot about at the air district, because I sit on the on the Bay Area Air District as a commissioner. And just our focus on making sure that we stay focused on the most impactful items. So for example, at the air district, been focused a lot on diesel emissions, diesel emissions on trucks. Cars are pretty doggone clean these days compared to trucks or wood smoke. Wood smoke is highly toxic. And it's something that the air district has stayed away for political reasons from. But in terms of the danger that it poses to residents, it's actually quite high. And so I just want to make sure that we, as we think about our climate action plan and all goals periodically get updated, if we're making, if we can make sure that what we've laid out are the most impactful things and if we've learned some things subsequent, let's just come to council and say, hey, I'm thinking that maybe we should update our goals in the following way. And I think that we would be very receptive to that. So with that, I will close this item since there is no more discussion and we go to our next item on the agenda, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item number 10, today we don't actually have action items and I don't believe we had any requests for for agenda items for consideration. So we will move to council reports, announcements and the like. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, it feels like a long time ago, but since we were on that break, I just wanted to share that at the end of June, I did attend the AAPI Lead Summit, the first gathering of or organization to bring together local, state and federal AAPI electeds. And one of the most impactful sessions, learnings that I participated in was focused on the impact of the current immigration policy on ANHPI populations and ways to respond and protect our residents. And so I just wanted to share that because that is still top of mind and having active conversations with the staff about that. I also really wanted to just give a shout out to staff because now that we've gone back to school and I drive down Bancroft twice a day, it is so great to have the Bancroft paved and the parents are doing a great job of turning into the Bancroft parking lot and taking a right outside of the parking area and not going into the left lane. So it's, it's a really, people are very excited about that. I also want to share that my kids had the privilege of attending Shaboo Day Camps this summer and attended the largest one, I think there were almost 300 kids in that last session. And it was such a joy to be a part of. And I will say that for those families, it really is a matter of a very much needed resource in the community. And so thank you so much for providing that. And then I wanted to share also, I saw that the city was, I forget the organization the city has partnered with, but working with entrepreneurs in the city for daycare providers to be able to potentially start daycare programs in the city, also much needed. So it's lovely to see the work being done that when we sit up here and we talk about our our action plans or our economic development plan, to see some of those strategies out there, I know it flies under the radar for us at times, but it's really nice to be able to see. So shout out to the PIO and everybody else who's working on getting that information out. I will be at the farmer's market on September 10th. So encourage anybody in the community to come out and visit. I will also have some community members who have been working on getting know your rights cards out in different languages. And so if anybody wants to come and get copies of those to hand out, I will have many for you. And finally, the other thing in District Five that I'm really excited about is the ribbon cutting on September 27th from Memorial Park. I know people have been talking about that as well as sprouts, but you can check, you know, online for all that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aguilar, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. I think, you know, a lot of us were busy on break. So August 5th through 7th, I was invited by the Strong Cities Network to participate in a panel discussion in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I collaborated with fellow mayors at the Strong Cities Network to address the growing threats, hate and harassment directed at public officials in the U.S. and Canada. I mentioned that no individual should face mortal fear while serving their community. Many face threats or violence while serving in public office. The targeted shooting in Minnesota of Minnesota lawmakers emphasized the urgency of this issue. And to ensure democracy prospers without fear, we must protect our leaders and ourselves. In my capacity as a council member, I shared my personal stories, especially as an LGBTQ Latinx leader. I am always vulnerable to threats and that's just upon that aspect. But all in all, it was a great conference. On August 13th, I attended the 1,139th meeting of the Board of Trustees for Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District with regards to the arbo virus and mosquitoes. None of the traps this month work of the traps were collected. No mosquitoes were weren't infected with West Nile virus. With regards to viruses and birds, none of the birds collected this month were positive for West Nile virus. And this month, 28 birds were tested, none were positive for West Nile virus. And 262 mosquito collections from our traps were tested for West Nile virus, St. Louis encephalitis virus and Western equine encephalitis. None of these mosquitoes were positive for any of any of those, although there was one 80s egypti larvae that was collected from a monitoring trap in Pleasanton at the Alameda County Fairgrounds. And no additional 80s egypti were found, none of the 80s water traps tested positive for 80s egypti environmental DNA. On August 14th, I attended the LGBTQ Lo Board Meeting with the National League of Cities. Then on August 20th, I attended the WHOA meeting, worked with our PIO pulse after to get some information with city updates. And he also provided me an early release of the city manager's update, which I presented to the WHOA. And there were many questions. And one of the questions that the that, well, question that a lot of folks had was regards to the citizen bond measure. So I think that was something that I was caught off guard by, but I got some answers to that. So that ends my report. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other announcements? Okay, I would like to, before making my announcement, remind the public that we did close our public comment, but if anybody wants to continue that public comment, because we did shut it off before everyone had spoken, this would be the time to raise your hand because when I'm done with my comment, I will come over and reopen that item, item number seven. So just very quickly on on my end, a couple of announcements. Third Act will be bringing their Sun Day here to San Leandro on September 21st, Sunday, September 21st. I believe it starts at 10:00 a.m. and runs through about 3:00 p.m. or 4:00 p.m. And celebrating renewable, sustainable energy. So hopefully some of our folks, I know some council members have volunteered already to participate. And I know we've got youth from the community also volunteering to participate. So it should be a pretty energetic day. On the 20th, we have a community cleanup, Shoreline Community Cleanup in particular. So encouraging the members of the public to participate. I have my date right, if you could just check very quickly. City manager, I believe Saturday, September 14th is our barbecue. It's the United for Safety Barbecue here at City Hall. On the 13th, thank you very much. So it's Saturday, the 13th, starting a little bit before noon. And again, encouraging members of the public to avail themselves of coming here and enjoying some some food with us. I think the other thing that I do want to just offer, now we are in some trying times. And for a number of weekends now, we've had folks gather here at downtown at Root Park to really celebrate democracy and to highlight the importance of speaking up, to defending the rights of immigrants and those that are disenfranchised. And it has been wonderful to see so many different people and diverse people from our community gathering together to promote unity and to recognize that the American flag is a symbol of inclusion and to not let it be usurped by those that would take the flag and use it to divide people. And so I'm really proud of the community for coming together to support the rights of folks. And when I, when I think about times that I've been proud to be an American, one of those times was on my vacation this summer. I had the the privilege of going to South Africa and while I was there, I had the opportunity to to visit with the State Department folks at a program where they were promoting Education USA. And to hear local people talk about the wonderful experience that they had by coming to live in Alabama, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Texas, that they were so welcomed, even though they were foreigners, and they were thoroughly shocked. were foreigners, and they were thoroughly shocked. So I'm proud that we, as a country, do have programs where we encourage people from other countries to come and visit and see the best parts of who we are. And I'm proud of that. And so hopefully, we can continue to have programs like that where we promote American goodwill around the world. So with that, we'll go to any final public comments. Do we have any hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have one hand up online.
Please proceed.
We now have two hands up online. Doug Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
I'm still here. Thanks for the correction, Mayor. I am geographically challenged. One thing I would point out is that it seems like the date and time of the United for Safety Barbecue directly conflicts with the Akdrobo Festa event for that day. The reason for my hand is, I know we are all impacted by inflation and maybe no more, no more so than when we look at our PG&E bill. And the fact is that PG&E has been siphoning money from our bills for decades to feed the profits of their shareholders that are part of the PG&E corporation, as sink from the company. That, of course, has meant that they haven't, hadn't really invested sufficiently in maintenance of the grid, resulting in the San Bruno National Natural Gas Line bursting and numerous fires all over the place. And it's frustrating that they've largely escaped legal and fiduciary responsibility and that they're now passing through the costs of doing that maintenance to all of us, making our bills higher. So why do I talk about this? Because it seems to me in San Leandro, many landlords operate on a similar basis. They pocket our rent money, cashing the check. They don't necessarily make repairs that are needed. They don't hold money in reserve for those things like, you know, when the sewer line gets backed up or the roof starts leaking. And instead, these landlords hold the same attitude and practice as PG&E by wanting to pass through all those costs to tenants. And this is true whether you are a tenant in an apartment or if you are part of a mobile home park. I oppose the notion that's currently written into the ordinance that we're going to greenlight some percentage of these costs that will be passed on. I think it all should go before the hearing officer.
Thank you. Your time is up. Ginny Madsen, you may unmute yourself.
So thank you. I cannot not give public comment in support of the rent stabilization ordinance that you are all going to be considering shortly. I can't let it pass. I've worked too long on this. I have learned a lot of things this summer, one of which is that according to the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, most of the rental units in the nine barrier counties, including Alameda, are single-family homes. I have also been researching certain property ownerships. And most, I am stunned at the amount of rental property in San Leandro that is owned by people who live in San Ramon or Walnut Creek or Orinda. It is not owned by San Leandrons, and you need to, you need to remember that. I also learned that 51 families were evicted in the 94577 ZIP code in 2023. That was also from Bafa. I've learned a lot of stuff this summer, and I don't know, it, we are all in this together, and we need to have San Leandro survive. And it's not going to survive if it's owned by private equity and people who were just here, who just own the property here for investment. It's important that people stay housed, and I am in support of Mission Bay and Trailer Haven and all the other parks in town. You need to give some attention to that, too. Thank you. Thank you. I know it's too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there is no more public comment.
Okay, so with that, we'll close public comment. And I would like to just clarify one thing very quickly for the benefit of one of our public commenters. You have a wonderful opportunity to come to the barbecue, starting at 10:00 a.m. It runs until 2:00 p.m. And then go over to Akdroberfest, which runs from noon all the way to 6:00 p.m. So lest you feel like that you are unable to do that. With that, what I'd like to do is adjourn our meeting, reflecting for just a couple of seconds about, for the tragedy that occurred in Minneapolis and the killing of innocent children, because I do think it's so powerful when we hear this expression, they're in our thoughts and prayers. I mean, these people are literally praying. And I think we, it's time to move on to either second amendment, amendments, updates, and/or just being more committed to more stringent gun control laws in the United States of America. So with that, let's take a moment of silence and remember those folks. So in memory of those children, we are adjourned at 8:52.